UBSUDDLIVE's Local Government Live Streams are presented by Plumus Lake Self-Storage in Plumus Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumuslakeselfstorage.com.
And to the Republic, which stands: One Nation Under God, Indivisible, Everlasting, and Just for All.
Thank you. Public comment, Mandy.
Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Board of Directors on any subject matter that is not on the meeting agenda and is within the Board's subject matter jurisdiction. Public comment periods are limited to three minutes per person, and the total amount of time for public comment is 15 minutes. Persons participating by way of video conference or teleconference shall ensure their audio is muted at all times, except when the Board Chair announces public comment periods. At those designated times, members of the public wishing to speak shall enable their audio and state their name for the record. When multiple members of the public wish to speak, the clerk will determine the order of speakers and announce their names accordingly to ensure proper conduct. The Board reserves the right to mute the audio and video of any member of the public violating generally accepted principles and acronyms of official public meeting, and we do not have any public comment.
No one here from the public wishing to speak? Okay, we'll move on to consent items.
I'll move to proof.
Second. Okay, motion's been made in second, and all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None, great. Discussion items: Receive a presentation concerning the proposed extension of the Yuba Accord long-term water transfer program. Willie.
Yeah, good morning, Board members. I'm happy to present this to you today. Today, you're going to take two major steps. First, certification of an environmental document under CEQA that covers the Accord Water Transfer Program for an additional 25 years through December 2050. And second, approval for the agency to negotiate and execute extensions to the Water Transfer and Conjunctive Use Agreements. And these are agreements that we have with our local member units and with Department of Water Resources and state water contractors, folks that buy the Yuba Accord water. Since 2008, the Accord has been one of the agency's key programs that provides benefits to fisheries and river habitat. It also provides local water supply and statewide water supply, and it also provides revenue that we invest into the agency mission, including flood control. The extension of the Lower Yuba River Accord is also a named objective in the agency's strategic plan, which you adopted last year. It's included in Objective Number Three. Priority Number Two: Maintain and Enhance the Delivery of a Reliable Water Supply for the People of Yuba County. We're proposing to extend the Accord through 2050 with no significant changes. I will remind you that the Yuba Accord consists of three agreements: the Fisheries Agreement, which is not expiring and not changing, the Conjunctive Use Agreement, and the Water Purchase Agreement. Those are the two agreements that we're proposing to extend. The Fisheries Agreement is the agreement that includes the minimum in-stream flow requirements for the Lower Yuba River that benefit salmon and other species. Those aren't proposed to be changed. So today's actions are just steps in the process to extend the Accord. If you approve these items today, we'll work to finalize the extended agreements and continue working with the State Water Board to get final state approvals needed to extend the Accord. So there's two more, there's two subsequent agenda items. First is the public hearing. The first item is this hearing required by the Agency Act. The purpose of the public hearing is for you to receive comments about whether the proposed extension would adversely affect water supplies for water provided to our member units. And in that public hearing, we'd like to invite comments. I see a handful of our local irrigators, our member units, in the audience, and I'm hoping some of them will come up and speak to this item. And secondly, there's a resolution for the proposed extension. This is a resolution to consider approving a supplemental environmental impact report for the extension, or SEIR. The SEIR went through the public review process required by CEQA. Hitting the high points, the SEIR concludes that this is just an extension of the existing long-term program, so the extension will not create new or additional environmental impacts under CEQA. Anyone who has comments on the CEQA document would be welcome to speak during public comment for this item. The resolution also makes findings required by the Agency Act and gives approval to move ahead with the Accord extension process. Before we move on, I want to introduce some of the folks that have been working on the Accord for us over the past two years on this effort, but let's call it 25 or maybe 40 years for the overall effort, including Paul Barkowitz. So I'll start with him. On Zoom, we have our former general counsel and current consulting attorney, Paul Barkowitz. We also have consulting engineer Steve Grinnell online, and then our consultant from Ascent Environmental, Sidney Coatsworth. Ascent is the group that's helping us move this CEQA process along. I already mentioned, but I'll mention again, Barkowitz and Grinnell were part of the original development of the Yuba Accord back in the mid-2000s and have been involved in managing the Accord for its first 15 years and have been helping us move this forward and get this extension moved along. There's a lot of knowledge there. So also in person, we have our CEQA attorney, Chip Wilkins. He's here in the front row on the right. Chip will assist with any CEQA questions or comments that may come up. And lastly, I want to recognize folks on our internal staff, John James, I think John is here. He and his team have been working on the extending the Accord. Joanna Lassard, she's on vacation and not here, and then I don't believe Jacob's here, but Jacob Vandermeulen has also been, oh, Jacob, didn't see you back there. Jacob Vandermeulen has also been working on this. That concludes my presentation for the Accord Extension Items, and unless there are board questions, Chair Messick, we're ready to proceed to the public hearing and then consideration of the resolution.
Any questions of the Board members before we proceed? None? Okay. Item four is public hearing to receive comments concerning the proposed extension of the Yuba Accord Long-Term Water Transfer Program. So the public hearing is to receive comments on the following issues: whether the water supplies that would be subject to the extended Accord are surplus to the requirements of the agency members' unit water supply agreements. The public hearing is being held under Section 5.2 of the Yuba County Agency Act. I am now opening the public hearing. Does anyone wish to present a comment?
We do have one, public comment from Mike Felice.
Honorable Chair, Board Members, Mike Felice, Hallwood Irrigation Company, also a member unit representative. If I could, I'd just like to take a minute and go back in time just a hair back to 2007, when we negotiated with the agency on the Yuba River Accord for our conjunctive use contracts. There's only seven districts that signed back in the end of 2007. Out of those seven districts, there's only three of us negotiators that were original in that: myself, Michael Rue, and Walter Carter, who retired off the Brown Valley Irrigation District. We lost four members. We lost Jack Gilbert, Wheaton Water District. We lost Bill Baggett with Brophy Irrigation District. We lost Jim Van Trez with Tamaris Water District. And we lost Doug Walts also. Oh, I'll back up a minute. Dry Creek Water District was Jack Gilbert, Doug Walts was Wheaton Water. I had those two mixed up, kind of in the same area, so I get mixed up. Anyway, we lost those important people quite early. They were very instrumental in the Accord negotiations. I just think it needed to be said, another person that was lost off this board was Sid Muck. Sid Muck served on the board at that time. We lost him early, I think, this year or last year. So there's a few of us left. Who knows how long? Mike Rue tells me that when it comes time for him to go, he's not going. He's going to be there forever. You can ask him, he tells me that every time. And I hope, I hope you're right, Mike. But anyway, I'm up here to represent all eight districts. They've asked me, I polled them, they couldn't all make it here today. Harvest is going on, guys are busy. As a matter of fact, I was even busy in Harvest, but I know this is important, so pulled away. But we're here today to renew the Accord. We think it's important, and if you don't mind, I'd like to go through those member districts' names, and I'd like it to go in the record of supporting the new Accord renewal going forward till 2050, I guess. Anyway, I'll start with the North Districts: Brown Valley Irrigation District, Hallwood Irrigation District, Ordeway Irrigation District, Tamaris Irrigation District coming on. On the South, we have Brophy Water District, South Yuba Water District, Dry Creek Mutual Water, and Wheaton Water District. I'd like that to go in the record that we all support this. We appreciate all the efforts that the Board has instructed their staff to do. Staff has worked diligently on this. We continue to work on some of this. As it goes forward, there's other things that are happening in the water world and the agency, and your manager and the people under him have been keeping us abreast of what's going on. We hope to continue things. Anyway, thank you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this? All right. Hearing no further comments, the public hearing is now closed. Mandy, for the meeting minutes, has the agency received any written protests from registered Yuba County voters that are against extending the Accord Transfer Program?
No, we did not receive any written protest.
Thank you. Mandy, please call the next agenda item.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
When the Accord was being negotiated, Ordwa and South, Mike Rue's Water District opposed it, but not in this part. We only opposed it because of the giving so much water to the fish. Just, and the fish are not up in this part of the Accord. We just wanted to keep the record straight.
Thank you, Charlie.
Our next addition item is Consider Adoption of Resolution Number 2024-14, certifying the final supplemental environmental impact report for the extension of the Yuba River Accord Long-Term Water Transfer Program. Making related CEQA findings, finding the proposed extension is categorically exempt from CEQA, making findings under the Agency Act and Water Code and approving the proposed extension.
Willie. No, okay, there's no comment. Any questions of the Board? Was there a motion?
So moved. Paul Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Okay, item six: Receive update on the progress to form a nonprofit organization for the purpose of education and research in Yuba County and three-year plan for that organization. Approve the Memorandum of Understanding and approve the initial budget allocation of $150,000 annually for three years, total sum of $450,000, to fund the startup of the organization. Terry.
Good morning. So today, we bring you the next step in the formation of the not-for-profit that we are forming together with the city of Wheatland. So quick update, and so we do have a not-for-profit now. We have filed the Articles of Incorporation and have been accepted, and we have applied for a tax ID number. You know what you have to have before you go forward doing anything. The purpose of our YARC, the Yuba Applied Research Center, is research and education and other charitable endeavors for the people of Yuba County. So if you recall, back in July, just to bring everybody up to date, you heard a presentation about the YARC, and you approved those Articles of Incorporation and the initial bylaws for the organization. The bylaws will be formally adopted by the Board of Directors of the YARC when they first meet, and you initially named, just for the organizing phase, three people to the YARC Board, and Wheatland has named two people. The people representing Yuba Water are Willie, the General Manager, Ryan McNally, and me. And then the City Manager of Wheatland and their Director of Finance will be, those will be the first five Board members, just going through the organizational phase of getting everything in line for this not-for-profit. And then we will back, we will be back to you with a process for naming longer-term Board members. So if you recall, when we talked in July, the first phase of our not-for-profit of the YARC was we were going to be operating virtually. And in fact, we are operating some things virtually already, and now they're shifted over to be operating under the YARC. The first one was a Memorandum of Understanding that we signed with Citrus, the Center for Information Technology and Its Impact on Society. That's a research institute that includes UC Berkeley, UC Santa Cruz, UC Davis, and UC Merced. And under that MOU, we have already started our first research project, which Yuba Water is funding, and that, you've heard about, that is the research project to figure out where to put sensors in our levees so that we can do, have early detection of weaknesses in our levees. So that is ongoing right now. We have been running two interns this summer that have been doing IT research projects at Beal Air Force Base, and that was a, is jointly paid for by Yuba Water and AKT Development, but those are through our YARC. We are now ready to accept a donation of property from AKT Development for the actual location of a bricks-and-mortar YARC. And we've already informally started a needs assessment, but we'll want to do a more formal needs assessment for an actual bricks-and-mortar YARC. What should be there? How big should it be? And I assure you, it's going to be not the Taj Mahal, but a very functional building. So we're already getting started. Today, what you're going to hear are about three things. The first is a more in-depth plan of how the YARC, what is going to operate, what are our goals, what are the projects we're going to investigate for the next three years. If you recall, I had proposed that Yuba Water and Wheatland, but primarily Yuba Water, is going to be helping to form this not-for-profit and standing it up. Certainly, Wheatland's going to be helping on the organizational end of things and getting things going. And so you're going to hear the plan of what we're going to work on for the first three years. The second thing you're going to hear about is a budget. So that's a budget request that comes from me for Yuba Water for the first three years of funding for the YARC. I'm asking for $150,000, up to $150,000 a year for three years. The whole idea is to get the YARC started. Let's go after some grants to get this building built and develop a revenue stream for the not-for-profit by renting out space in the research center to Beal, to some vendors to Beal, who have already expressed interest in leasing some space from us, and perhaps others. So the idea is we want to get this started, get it set up, we're going to fund it, and then we're going to push that little bird out of the nest so that it can operate independently. Certainly, if there are research projects after the three years that we would like done, then we would fund those research projects. But we won't be funding the YARC on a long-term basis, other than the research projects that we want done. So you're going to hear about the plan, and you just heard about the budget. It's a very simple budget at this point. There's going to be professional services that we need, things like accounting services, paying for a bank account, you know, it's things like that for the first three years. And then the third thing you're going to hear about is another MOU, and this time it's directly with UC Davis. And so that MOU was attached to the agenda item today, so that you can see it. And if you approve that MOU, then at 11:30 today, we're going to have a ceremonial signing of that MOU with all the parties that are involved. So this will be the second MOU that's running under the research project. So for the plan for the first three years, I'm going to ask Lon Hadamia to come up. He has been, he and his consulting team has been working diligently to develop this plan. Lon, of course, all of you know, is our economic development consultant that's been working with us for now, I think it's six years? Five years, for five years. So let me turn it over to Lon.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, really pleasure to see you, Mandy. I have a couple of presentations I want to present to you very quickly. As you recall, five years ago, as Terry has said, you hired me to help put together Yuba County Economic Strategic Plan, and I'm providing an update as we head into more of a specific description of the YARC as Terry has laid out. But I wanted to remind you of where we started and where we are today. And I briefly want to just highlight the strategic plan and where we've advanced in the last five years. We've come a long way. I'm going to be joined here just in a minute by my colleague, retired Major General Jake Palumbo, who I think many of you have met. He's not here with me today, but he's joining us via Zoom, and he'll join me for the second part of this presentation. So as you will recall, the strategic plan process was created through extensive stakeholder outreach throughout the community. We met with over 100 individuals representing 50 agencies and organizations throughout the county. We conducted research on feasibility of key project ideas, and we think it's time, I've had a discussion with Terry and Willie about this, it's probably time to revisit with all of you priorities and to consider additions and alternatives to the plan. So in the coming weeks and days, I hope to meet with each of you individually and maybe even in groups, to talk about your priorities as we move forward into the next five years. And I'm going to remind you just now of some of the key projects that we identified and those that were moving forward in a key way. As you recall, we had four major strategic areas that we identified in the original plan. One was infrastructure expansion. Second was education and workforce development. Third was tourism and visitor services. And the fourth was technology clusters. And we had probably about 12 different projects that we identified as potential opportunities moving forward, and I'm going to highlight, I believe, the five highest priority that have made great headway over the last five years. We're currently engaged with the River Parkway Planning. My partner, Doug Svensson, is going to be engaged with an RFP process to determine a longer-term plan on that, so that's progressing nicely, working with the city of Marysville and others locally. We're continuing to work on looking at the State Route 65 bypass, and as you're probably all well aware, it's been renamed a Beal Expressway. We're also looking at Beal technology needs and the collaboration. We'll hear more about that from Colonel McLeese, who's the new commander at Beal. He'll be here for the signing of the MOU, but I'm going to touch upon that briefly in highlighting what we're going to be identifying as the focus of the YARC, South County infrastructure development, including wastewater. You're well aware of the efforts that are gone in that and your investment in that. And then lastly, the creation of the Yuba Applied Research Center, which I'll turn to here in just a minute. Let me lastly remind you of the kind of five-year action plan that we laid out to you five years ago, and the criteria for prioritizing policies and action items. And I just throw this up again just to remind all of you, because I'll bring this to you again when we meet individually, that as we look at the next five years, and some of the projects we initially identified, whether or not they're possible, I think a few of them have dropped off. Others have been created since that time and have higher priority, but these are kind of the five-year action plan items that I just wanted to ensure that you were reminded of. Mandy, if I could move to the next presentation very quickly, unless there are any questions from the directors to this point? Please.
Just to remind everyone that when we got started on this, and it still continues today, not all of these projects are ours, obviously. We can't, we can't build a bypass in Wheatland or Marysville. It's just not in our mission area. But the way we approach this, from guidance from our Board, was we're bringing all the parties together in Yuba County. So Yuba County, Wheatland, Marysville, everyone, together to identify the projects that need to be done and then figure out how to get them done. Okay? So it's really the county that's working on the Wheatland bypass, and Wheatland. So I just wanted to clarify that. That has been our approach, and that's going to continue to be our approach.
Through the chair. Is the California Department of Education going to be involved in any of our nonprofit management?
Probably not. It's always possible. They haven't been involved to date.
Okay. We do well on our own.
Let me now move to kind of the specifics on the YARC. Mandy, if you could pull that one up for me. So Terry mentioned the creation of the Yuba Applied Research Center. This was one of the highest priorities among the list that we identified, and this is kind of morphed from the first proposition of this still today. As I mentioned to you again, General Palumbo is going to be joining me here for this presentation. We've also hired a retired lieutenant colonel, former U-2 pilot, Lenny Spiegel, who's also joined our team to assist us through this process. He wasn't able to join us today, but he was very instrumental in creating this presentation. And as an economist, I love to provide PowerPoint presentations, so please bear with me as we go through this. I think it'll provide more detail and the specifics, and hopefully it answers any questions that you have. Real quickly, the mission and vision of the YARC are very simple. The YARC is a catalyst for economic growth and improved quality of life for Yuba County and the greater Sacramento region. Our goals are conducting technology and policy research, identifying and training a talented workforce, and providing a collaborative environment to link Yuba County to regional, state, and national efforts. The Yuba Applied Research Center is a coordinating entity for facilitating technology, agriculture, and prosperous, prosperous Yuba County. And again, the foundational guidelines for this are the Yuba Water Agency Strategic Plan that you all adopted for 2023 through 2027. The key tasks that we have, that we've identified for the YARC is Task One is to coordinate technology and policy research. The key areas, and we're going to talk about those real specifically in just a minute, are agriculture, climate action, energy research. Obviously, all three very applicable to Yuba County. And then the development over a phase and period of three collaboration centers, the first being AgTech and Environment, second Data and Digital Architecture, and the third, Space Systems Integration. You may ask questions about why all three, we'll answer those in just a minute. Task Two is really talent recruitment, retention, and management of people within Yuba County and attraction of, you know, obviously, quality folks to address these issues into the future. I think developing our relationships in collaboration with local universities and federally-funded research and development centers, FFRDCs, many of them are close by, UC Davis, Sac State, Chico State, Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory, Sandia National Laboratory, just to name a few. We also have what's called the DoD Skill Bridge Program, which Lenny Spiegel, I just mentioned, was part of. It provides funding for It provides funding for retiring Air Force personnel that we potentially can recruit into new jobs within the community. And the Air Force provides this funding and support for these retirees and allows them to transition into jobs that are relevant to their backgrounds and certainly qualifications. And we're going to talk briefly about not only the US Air Force, but the US Space Force talent that will be here in Uba County. I'm going to mention, and Colonel McLeese will be here shortly, to talk about the changing mission at Beal. And what the YARC is focused at doing is not only addressing the needs currently, but addressing the needs of the future and what the mission possibilities at Beal. And I'll talk about that also in a minute. We're also focused on STEM or STEAM educational opportunities, not forgetting about our, you know, our children and our students within Uba County, case in 12 programs, you know, various camps, seminars, Beal Air Force Community Outreach Programs. These are all critical to ensure that we train our workforce locally for the types of jobs that we can create into the future. And this is going to really change, over the next 10 years, the opportunities, higher-paying and higher-wage jobs within the county and make the county much greater, a greater financial footing as well. Task three is really the development of engagements and partnerships, the collaborative part of the YARC. We've been in discussions with Air Force Combat Command Chief Scientist. As Mandy Farquhar, we're going to be visiting the Air Force Combat Command Commander next week, Gary Bradford. And Willie and I, as well as several others, will be out there to advocate for the new mission at Beal, but also to talk about YARC's capability and what we're doing locally to support what's going out at the base, but supporting and helping ourselves within the community. There's another number of other collaborative opportunities here, Chief Operations Officer at the US Space Force, obviously the leadership at Beal Air Force Base, UC Berkeley, UC Davis, and down the line, we've been working with very closely. Let me talk about, real quickly, about what the YARC core focus areas will be. And I think this is probably an area of interest for all of you. As I mentioned before, the YARC will maintain, create, and nurture essential engineering, research, and developmental capabilities with subject matter expertise in the following core focus areas. And these are areas that we've identified that not only pertinent to Uba County, but are emerging as opportunities not only in the state, but globally. Agricultural technology, including artificial intelligence, wildfire prediction, prevention, and containment, forestry resilience, power and water demand forecasting, emergency response planning, energy sustainability and resilience, data and digital architecture, again, including AI and space systems integration. Let me move to the goals and objectives. Again, the YARC and collaboration with the city of Wheatland, the Uba Water Agency, the University of California at Davis, and the US Air Force and US Space Force at Beal Air Force Base will bridge state and local government to vital national defense and homeland security requirements and efforts, serve as an economic catalyst for regional job creation and economic development, provide a collaborative environment to develop mutually beneficial research projects between government, academia, and industry partners. And lastly, protect and leverage the vital natural resources of Uba County. And this is something that I share always. I don't think there's a place in the state of California that has the mixture of resources that we do in Uba County. The ability to produce electricity, the abundance of water, and certainly the availability of land. Those are three things that don't exist, I believe, in any other county in the state. And those are things that I think we could certainly take full advantage of and leverage to our advantage for the future. Let me turn now to the phasing strategy. I'm going to turn to General Palumbo about the three phases of what we're looking at. And there are three phases. We're not building this all at once, as Terry had shared. We're initially starting out as a virtual activity, which we continue to do and can operate from many different efforts, from my office, from the Water Agency office, and from places at Beal. Our initial goal is in 2024 is our efforts, activities, and collaborations will be to coordinate and synchronize efforts of key stakeholders and educate potential strategic partners, both in the Air Force Combat Command, the University of California system, the Air Force Research Lab, and the US Space Force on YARC value propositions. Let me turn to, again, General Palumbo now to talk about kind of the next phases, the 2025 and the 2026 and 2027. Jake, are you there?
Lon, I'm here. Can you hear me all right?
I think we can, please.
All right. I don't think I have video, but Chair Messick, directors, and Willie and Terry, it's really good to be back with you again. And I am in charge of this portion of the briefing. If you'll go to the next slide. What Terry asked us to do was to take a look at a concept sketch, if you will, just a sketch of how we might propose to you, the board, the directors, on how it might look as it develops on this maybe 10 acres of land that we expect to be donated. Not exactly precisely sure which 10 acres, but we know it's in the area that you see depicted. And so what we thought we would do was walk through not only the sketch of how the research center, the facilities would, would take form, but also maybe the way a campus would start to take shape. And you'll see what I mean as we go through the phases. In this initial phase, we really take a look at the facilities that make us functional as a research center, a collaboration center, a multi-use auditorium, and how we might be able to do ag tech and other environmental discussions and meetings and get togethers, and especially take care of the needs of the Water Agency in areas where they might want to meet in this area, as well as Beal Air Force Base using some of these facilities for their meetings outside of their fence line. As Lon said, it's fall of '25, maybe, where we would look to try and get started on this. And the activities would simply be technical exchange meetings, conferences, different resilient energy collaboration meetings that Beal runs usually on base, but that would ultimately hopefully end up in something using our facilities and then the industry partners that might want to join in that regard. So that would be phase one and maybe roll into the early part of '26. If you go to the next slide, we start to take a look at what likely will be needed because of the expanding mission set at Beal that we know about now with very specific conversations with the Air Force and with the Space Force. And we really focus heavily on data and digital architecture because that's what Beal does now. That's what they're going to be doing for the next 10 or 20 years. So how does the community take part in that? How do we host the industry partners who do that? And then how do we actually make, make it useful to the industry, to the local community, but also to the Department of the Air Force, including the Space Force? We know from discussions with the Space Force senior leadership in Colorado Springs and back in DC that there's going to be needs for space systems integration in the squadrons, the deltas, if you will, that are moving to the base over the next year. And we truly believe that we can have a part to play in that, especially if we preclude the need to always own the base. Notionally, we include this item called an innovative power lab. We think that there's probably a good way to do this, support this facility as it builds via this innovative power lab and solar and battery logistics, which we think that Uba Water can truly have a lead role in as we think about switching and substations and those things. And that'll all start to take shape in the fall of '26. And it does align to Beal's mission transition. And we think that the activities will be similar to what we have already said for our needs in the Water Agency. But more importantly, we're starting to now think about how US Air Force Air Combat Command and Space Force Integrated Research can get done so that we can really host some of the things that FFRDC research initiatives might fund. And that, again, will create some of that revenue stream that Terry was talking about earlier. If you go to the next slide, this is where it starts to look like a campus. Maybe we start to look at educational opportunities that could be put together in terms of the STEM education opportunities, especially for our younger children, K through 12. We do think that it's going to be, that external stakeholders are going to want to use facilities, and they may even really assist us in development of some of these things in the summer of 2027 and beyond. The facilitated activities, again, truly are notional, they're aspirational, but national level RDT and E, the real high-tech research that we would hope to be into by then because of our connections into the base and the Department of the Air Force. That's where really we get going on this and can do some of the hosted teaming meetings and collaboration that Lon has led off with, whether it be in data and digital architecture, space systems integration, or even just into the Air Force's climate action plan and the needs of the base to continue to move towards those goals. I also highlight another notional hydrogen fuel and power facility. I know in talking to Creighton and the staff at the Water Agency that they have the tasker to keep that on their desk and sight picture as they look for it. So how does this campus and how does this facility truly look innovative and forward? Thinking, well, we think about these other types of fuel sources in addition to the solar and battery logistics that got us up and running in the air and holding our altitude. If you'll go to the next slide, I will simply say the stakeholders for this right now are pretty impressive, and they are all willingly on this slide. Again, the Beal Air Force Base leadership across the guard, reserve, and active duty are all interested in how we're going to put this together. And we know that the Space Force, as it expands on the base, are willing to do it. We also know, as our discussions with Lawrence Livermore National Lab and the Sandia National Labs down in the Bay Area, they truly are interested in what we're doing, and they know there's some connective tissue that can develop from this if we do this deliberately, smartly, and stay within our budget. I will pause for questions, but I think it's best to have Lon come back to the podium. And between the two of us, we can answer your questions. But Lon, any other comments on this value proposition model?
Yeah, thanks, Jake. Again, I want to highlight the fact that these plans we just laid out here are aspirational. These are obviously things we're looking at, hopefully accomplishing over a 10, 20-year period. It's not going to happen just tomorrow. And you may ask the question, well, how is all this going to be funded? I know that Terry's going to talk to you about the initial funding request for the next three years. It's our plan to identify federal and state funding for these. These kinds of innovation centers are funded on a national level by many different sources. So we're not looking to the Water Agency to build this. We believe that there will be opportunities to build these things in phases. And then, as Jake has mentioned, as we develop potential users, that will create, hopefully, revenue streams for us to build even further for other opportunities. And Jake was here just last week for the Air Force Ball, he was a keynote speaker. We also had the opportunity to speak with a couple of defense contractors that are very interested in this concept about having a footprint in Uba County and not being just in Placer and Sacramento County, but being here closer to the base. And how the new mission is evolving at Beal is really going to be dependent upon that. And so a lot of this initiative is certainly based upon what we see coming out of Beal. But let me also return back to my initial comments. We believe the research initially that's already currently being done benefits the county in flood protection. We think that research that will evolve from here will assist in agricultural production longer term. It will address water issues and wildfire issues and issues that we deal with on a daily basis in Uba County. And so the benefits that are derived from this are twofold or multifold, and I think that's really important to note, that it all comes back to the local benefit that can be derived. Again, but it also relies upon our largest employer within the county and how they can be even more of a strategic partner for us in the future. So let me leave it at that. If you have questions, Jake and I are happy to answer those. I know we covered a lot of ground here in a very short period of time, but as you can see, this took over the last five years to develop this effort, and we've come a long way from the notional idea we had five years ago. So thank you.
Thank you, Lon. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Could you give us an idea where Beal expects to be five years from today and 10 years as the missions all have at the base?
Yeah, Director Matthews, that's a great question. As I think everybody knows in this community, the U-2 is going to be retired, so they're going to be transitioning to different missions. Let me maybe turn that over to General Palumbo, since he's an expert on. I don't want to miss anything. I want to make sure he answers that question appropriately. Jake?
Yeah, it is a truly $64,000 question, but I believe that the future is bright, it's sustained and solid for the airmen and the guardians, the Space Force folks out there at the base. They do data, they do reconnaissance, they do command and control of sensors around the world that gather information. They do analytics on that information, and then they disseminate that information all over the world to warfighting commanders. So their campus, what they call their ISR campus, Intelligence Surveillance and Reconnaissance Campus, it is a mature mission set for the base, and they will do that five, 10 years into the future, I'm certain. It will use more and more space assets, satellites, and various levels of orbit. But it'll also probably use more and more autonomous platforms, autonomous air platforms, but it'll also use autonomous platforms that might be at sea and any other way, as long as they're connected to the grid. So we see autonomous collaborative platforms coming to Beal. We're not sure exactly what those are. You can ask Colonel McLeese today, his opinion on how that'll work, because he knows we are supporting the potential mission set of autonomous collaborative platforms or collaborative combat aircraft. They just aren't manned like the U-2 and the SR-71 was. But they do data, Charlie, and that's why it's so important that we support that from the community and we don't, you know, wring our hands that the U-2s are going away and the SR-71s are only on a stick. We, they have a mission, it will be there 10 years from now.
And let me just add to that, what Jake has just shared, there's over a billion dollars worth of planned infrastructure development out at the base that'll occur over the next five to 10 years. And so they wouldn't be investing a billion dollars in that base unless it's going to be there for a long term. And that billion dollars is going towards a lot of this new mission set that Jake has just talked about. And so I think, again, Colonel McLeese can talk in more specifics this afternoon, or later this morning, about what the potentials are for new missions.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Through the chair. Uba Water is rather unique in that we could supply a direct power supply to Beal. What exactly have they thought about that?
Let me, I'll turn to Willie to answer that, because I know we've been focused on that. Director Vasco, you're correct, Uba Water Agency can sell wholesale power. We can't own and operate transmission lines. So we have talked to Beal and we've talked to other transmission providers about serving Beal. It's still a possibility. It's a long-term strategy where we could end up having that type of a relationship, but there's nothing set in stone, and there's not even really a concept yet of how we would do that.
But we would be, if the grid went down, we'd still be able to supply power to them. Isn't that correct?
If there was a direct connection between our generators and the base. Currently, Beal has two power providers. Their primary provider is WAPA, the Western Area Power Authority. We, our generators are not directly connected to WAPA. Their backup provider is Pacific Gas and Electric. And our generators are provided to Pacific And our generators are provided to Pacific Gas and Electric. As long as those systems are up and running, Beal will have energy. A direct tie from our generators to Beal would be more resilient than the existing infrastructure.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Through the chair, not a question, just a comment. I don't think there are words to express how excited I am about this initiative and Lon and General Palumbo and everyone else certainly appreciate all the effort that's gone into this. I think one of the best things that I took away from your presentation was the multi-benefit of this project and this initiative. So not only does it benefit Yuba Water Agency, not only because of things that we care about, forest management, flood risk reduction, things like that. Not only does it benefit the people of Yuba County through economic resiliency and really economic prosperity, it also benefits industries, local industries like agriculture, and it also benefits really one of the largest employers in Northern California and our national defense. And so, and even our kids, right? And so I think there are so many reasons to continue to move this forward and support it. And I'm excited for the work that we're doing and so thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll just add on to what Gary said. I just think it's a very important project for Yuba County and not only for fire safety and everything else, but also water delivery and conservation. I think with the research we could do, we could really help the agricultural industry in our area and deliver more water and conserve water as well. I really like that it's off-base. It's something that's more accessible to the general public. I kind of link it to the Beal Aero Club moving off of base to Yuba County Airport. I went through their program and it was painful sometimes to get onto base to go to a IFR ground school out there. So it's so nice to have it off-base now. My 17-year-old, 16-year-old son's actually in their program, done ground school, flying the Beal Aero Club's airplanes because it's off-base. So I kind of linked that to this situation where it'll be off-base, more accessible. Our ag, local ag department can go out there and go, hey, we're having a problem with this. You know, we can work together on researching solutions. So I think it'll be a really great thing for Yuba County. Tom McQuarter, do you have something to add?
Sure.
Yeah.
Morning everybody. My name's Tom McQuarter, I live in Olivehurst. I'm retired Air Force. I was signed out here at Beal. And a couple of things, as the Chair just mentioned, it's a lot, very convenient to tend military installations that are not secured by military law enforcement or forces. So while it was difficult, Chair, to get on base, you had that extra level of protection. And right now, with very highs, you know, there's a lot of danger out there. So I myself am not really in favor of having this facility off-base if it's going to be involved with the military. Because they can provide security assets that are not able to be employed off-base due to federal and state local laws. The other thing is, I wanted to bring up was that the, so here we are spending $150,000 for three years, that's $450,000, on 10 acres of donated property. And I see this level of government just burgeoning. We all wonder how come we have so many layers of government. Well, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce you to the first step here, okay? This is how we're going to have this giant government bureaucracy in 10 or 20 years. And I haven't heard anything about, well, how are we going to, how are we going to produce this source of revenue? Are we going to get, anybody using this facility going to have to give us a cut of the patents? I know they do with the National Institute of Health. We've all heard a lot of stories about how many people who work for the NIH get so many millions of dollars on patents that was developed using US taxpayer money. And here we are, again, spending US taxpayer dollars. They want to build a brick and mortar Taj Mahal. And yet, don't we have any facilities here in Marysville that could use the revenue for the rent? I mean, there have been so many comments about non-revenue generating entities within the city, mostly the county, all right? But again, and then you're going to have to have a staff. And yet, I guarantee you, my next door neighbor's going to have two inches of water in his garage because this county for the last 60 years has been paying for a dam and I still get flooded. And so, you know, it's kind of this quid pro quo. You want us to spend this money? What is Olivehurst going to get out of this? Another flood? Fix my curbs, gutters, and sidewalks. You know, I've been told, well, we don't build sidewalks because, or the Water Agency can't spend money on it because it doesn't touch water. Baloney. The water that drains into that curb or gutter or drain comes right off that sidewalk. Okay? So until I get curbs, gutters, and sidewalks in all of Olivehurst, not in decades, as I heard from-
You got to wrap it up, Tom.
Huh?
You got to wrap it up, you're past three.
Okay. Well, anyway, not in decades, okay? Let's get some movement on that and then I could support this. Until then, no, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Any other comments, questions?
I think I do. So I'm really glad with this presentation, the first presentation was out a month or so ago, was, yeah, that was a little fuzzy to me. So this really helps clarify, I'm along with Gary as far as being excited about it. As far as stakeholders, I'm sure that at some point there'll be more and more actually Yuba County stakeholders, which are not really on the list directly. But, you know, we have a lot of, a lot of good assets in, within the county that are going to help bring this whole thing together. So, yeah, for me, it's really exciting and I'm glad that this presentation is bringing everything more into focus. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Yep.
Good. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on it? No? Okay, great. Thank you Lon.
Chairman, thank you very much for the opportunity today.
Excellent presentation.
Yep, good to see all of you again.
So there were not taking any action on that, correct?
No, we're asking for action on approval of the proposed plan. The second one is approval of the MOU, which would allow us to contract, allow the YARC to contract with UC Davis for research projects. And then the third one is approval to put, approval to put in our budget up to $150,000 per year for three years to fund the initial startup of the YARC.
I'll move to do all three of those things.
Second. Motion's been made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Managers report.
All right, well, the agency's operating fairly well these days. The New Blards Bar is at 672,000 acre feet with an end of month or end of year, water year, carryover target of 650,000 acre feet, and I think that we'll get there. Our construction of the power system headquarters in Oregon House is going well. There's a pretty detailed write-up in the hard coppery report of that work. Nothing anomalous to report there. Narrows Two, the generator at Narrows Two is out for annual maintenance, has been out since the beginning of the month and will, is planned to be returned to service at the end of the month. That work includes a significant amount of electrical testing, just testing the generator and all the conductor between the generator and transformer and transformer itself. I was up at the plant last week at a meeting, just a general update meeting, and I was talking to some of the electrician guys who operate this new electrical test equipment we invested in a couple of years ago. It's some pretty significant testing equipment. In the past, we had hired, and we still do hire, third-party consultants to come out and do this electrical testing. However, we bought a bunch of this equipment and our electricians and electrics are being trained on this equipment and they're actually performing these electrical tests during this outage and learning how to operate this equipment. You might think that this is simple. It's very complicated and it's, there's a lot of risk to it. In some of these tests, you're actually putting a significant amount of voltage on your electrical equipment. And if done wrong, if not trained well, you could actually cause more damage than you're trying to prevent by doing the testing. So I just want to compliment our electrical team and our power system team for just seeing the need or the opportunity to actually get trained on this equipment themselves and learn how to do it themselves so we could at any given time, whether it's a condition-based assessment like they're doing today, or if there's a problem with any of the electrical equipment, they can diagnose it in-house instead of waiting on a third party. This is a skill set that we don't, we hadn't had in-house until this point. So compliments to those guys for even proposing that. And it's taken a few years to get it ramped up and onboard, but I wanted to report that I just happened to be in a discussion about it last weekend and learned about the progress. So the weather's actually been pretty nice the last several days. We've had kind of this low pressure system come through, no significant precipitation, but a nice relief on the warm summertime temperatures. You're going to see warmer temperatures at the end of this coming weekend and then next week, we're not going to see, you know, 105, 110, but you're going to see mid to high 90s. And I'm hoping that's kind of the end of, just for comfort, I'm hoping it's the end of the summer season and we'll get into hopefully, you know, October, November precipitation season. You know, I do report El Nino versus La Nina, it's looking like there's a pretty strong chance of La Nina developing over the winter time. Again, I will just tell you, that doesn't mean it's going to be wet or dry, I'm just telling you what the ocean conditions are and you can, you know, go into history and look, but it's not a solid indicator of precipitation or snow, snowpack. But what it is, is it's a change in ocean temperatures. In our communications update, we were given a nice shout-out in the Appeal Democrat for our support of the watershed health certification programs at Yuba College. In a story they ran about the school's increasing enrollment. Over the weekend, there was an article in the Appeal previewing the accord extension item the board heard today. We have the MOU signing here today at 11:30 and following the board meeting. And media have been invited and will be issuing a press release afterward. Our upcoming sponsorships include the Farm Bureau's Farm Day and the Yuba River Cleanup on the 27th, the Foothills Food and Water Festival on the 28th and 29th, the Great Pumpkin Wayoff, Savor Say Love Dinner, and Marysville Kiwanis Hogs and Hulas, all on the 28th. And regarding the Yuba River Cleanup, we'll be having staff down at the Shad Pad for our cleanup on the morning of the 27th. And we'd love to have you, board members, come out and join us. Please let DeeDee know if you can make it. Lastly, I'd like to thank our member units for attending today's meeting to talk about the accord. I know that Mike Felice is the one that presented common comments for all the member units, but seeing a handful of our member units here to support the accord is, is very helpful and I appreciate that. Our staff and our consultants spend a lot of time on ensuring local water supplies and to see that we're in alignment with the folks that we deliver water to is super beneficial. So member units, if you're still around, thanks for being here, appreciate you. Upcoming meetings, on October 1st, we have a regular board meeting and we also have an ABP and POD committee meetings that day as well. That's all I have.
Thank you. Directors report, we'll start down here with Andy. We had a little hiccup in the meals on wheels and I'd like, I think the Yuba River Endowment has backup on the meals for 63 people that are not usually accepting of interruptions in their meals on wheels. And we've solved the problem for 30 days and then we're going to continue and get a year, year development out there. But thanks for Yuba River backing us up on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Lon?
Well, not too much of a report, but it's more of a comment. I'm more impressed all the time about the, the activities of the Yuba Water Agency and how they're supporting the county and everybody around us. As supervisors, we are in a lot of committees, probably twice what we should be. And most of the time, there's some effect from the Yuba Water Agency to help these various agencies and committees along, so it's, it's much appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you. Seth?
I had a few meetings the last couple of weeks. We were at rest with the Chairman Messick together. Unfortunately, they missed their application window for a sponsorship, so hopefully they'll have that for next year. However, we did get to enjoy the food bank presentation with Water Agency and it was fantastic, done by our own Jackie Silman. And then we also had a luncheon with Fiona Ma, where we got to talk to her about various issues that are confronting our area and how to resolve them. Upcoming, the 28th is a busy day. I think the Foothills has something or other going on, but more importantly, in Olivehurst, we have the fly-in at the airport and then of course, in that evening, it will be Hogs and Hulas. I have tickets, please buy them, otherwise I'll be in trouble. And lastly, I would like to echo what Mr. McQuarter said, it would be fantastic if his neighbor did not have two inches of water in his garage whenever it rained. So why don't we go ahead and fund the rest of that infrastructure needed in Olivehurst for flood protection?
You might consider walking to the building department, seeing the plaque on what's going up in Yuba and Olivehurst. Curbs, gutters, and sidewalks, walk in there.
Fantastic. We've done what, we're going to do one-third of Olivehurst with what we're doing there and now we've only got two-thirds to go.
Wayne?
Just briefly, just, it's a good day to be on this board, you know, really nice to see the progress on the accord and appreciate all the staff time and this YARC project is really exciting and it seems like for, you know, 150,000 a year is not pocket change, but it's a, it's a pretty small investment for the potential return that we can get out of that. So thank you for all the work, the whole staff.
Charlie?
Not much to report. The rice harvest is looking a little bit late, but the duck season is also a week later. We have plenty of water for the fall and the fishbowl. Thank you.
Here.
A few things. So first of all, a couple of weeks ago, I had an aqua board meeting over in Calusa and prior to the board meeting, we had an opportunity to tour a seed farm that operated by River Partners. And it's something I never really thought about, but you have all these habitat restoration projects with respect to plants and trees and things like that across the state of California with native, native species of plants. And this seed farm is where River Partners basically grows a lot of the seeds and farms them for that kind of initiative. So it was really interesting to see and I appreciate the opportunity to do that. Kind of related to some of the topics today. Last week, Willie and myself and Lon and General Palumbo and a few other folks got to go to Kratos in Roseville and they are, among other things, they're a manufacturer of collaborative combat aircraft and we got to learn a little bit about CCAs in general and specifically about their work in that space. And I know it was mentioned earlier, but we'll also be going back to Langley this weekend to meet with, have dinner with the commander of the Air Combat Command and talk about future missions at Beal. So I think that's a great opportunity. And then finally, related to just something kind of more on the county side, but Chair Messick and I will be headed over to Sonoma County today for the Annual Rural County Representatives of California Conference. So we'll be out of town the rest of the week.
Thank you. I have a few comments. I'd like to thank Mike Felice for your comments. You, you guys know the history more than anybody of all that. And maybe we should look into having some type of a plaque or something at our office for those people that put together the original accord. You know, you mentioned how many of them have passed, you know, and, and many of them are still alive, but it might be something to recognize them for getting that big of a group of farmers together and doing such an important thing for us. You know, and it's just really, it's a reminder to me that we need to do as much as we possibly can to benefit Yuba County and our community while we are still alive. We mentioned all those people, I know most of them that have passed, you know, and at the end of the day, only Michael Ruse is going to be left holding the bag here, so we need to put forth a big effort to try to get as much stuff done as we can while we're here.
we're here. I attended the Stampede, the sod busters for the water agency at the Water Justice Table. So thank you for sponsoring that important event. I found out my 60-year-old back couldn't keep up with my 21-year-old brain. I rode the bull twice and couldn't walk the next day, but it was a great time. And, and also attended the rodeo Saturday. So yes, the 28th is going to be a big day. Apparently, I'm the lead pilot in a flyover at the, for the airport days. And then at 3 o'clock, for all of you guys that don't like me, I'll be in the dunk booth at the Food and Water Festival. Be a good time to throw baseballs at me. And Sunday, the 29th, I'm going to be doing a presentation at the Dobbins Grange property for the Food and Water Festival. So everybody come on out to that. And then we are going to recess until 11:30 and I hope you all can go next door and buy a bag of walnuts for a snack or something and come back at 11:30 to watch this important signing for our, for this memorandum of understanding. So with that, I will hereby put us in recess until 11:30.
Yuba Sutter Lives Local Government Livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties.